For all the applicants that just joined, please mute yourself until asked to speak.
And we are live.
All right, thank you. Welcome to the September 2020 meeting of the Planning Board of the Town of Kent. Would everybody join me in the pledge of allegiance? Who'd like to start?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
With liberty and justice.
Which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Thank you. Has.
Are you coming or?
I'm sorry. Has everybody read the minutes from August meeting?
Yes.
Can I get a motion to accept those?
I'll make that motion.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Dennis, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Charlie.
Excuse me?
How do you vote on the minutes? You're fired.
Hi. Well, hi, that's good.
Simon.
I vote yes.
Stephen.
Hi.
And I vote yes, too.
No.
What we also have to do is each of you has to say that you're alone and not receiving any money from Putin. Dennis, are you alone?
I am alone.
Charlie.
I'm alone.
Simon.
I'm alone.
Stephen.
I'm alone.
And I'm alone also. Um, okay. I think we're starting with Fregosi Marinelli. Is there anyone here representing Fregosi Marinelli?
My name is Mark Marinelli, my wife is down this year, and my, uh, father-in-law.
Wait, thank you. Uh, gentlemen, we need to reopen the public hearing. Can I get a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
And a second, please.
Second.
Dennis, how do you vote?
All right.
Charlie.
Aye.
Simon.
Aye.
Stephen.
Aye.
And I vote aye, too. So can you just give us a quick rundown on your project?
Uh, yes, we got some comments today, and, um, I think we addressed, I want to see what other comments have. We, um, there's some on there that were addressed. Um, I had sent over the deed, um, a few times, which I think they have now. All this stuff, I think, was addressed. I'm not sure, they read them off of the PDF file, so, but we did provide the, um, the seven copies, um, maybe two weeks ago, if I'm right. Yeah, we provided nine sets of plans, but it says that the date on this memorandum was September 9th, so I don't know how they haven't seen the copies yet, maybe, over there.
No, I dropped them off three weeks.
Yeah, we have, we have them, and, um, I sent them out.
And consultants, who'd like to weigh in here?
Um, I'll, I'll go first. Hello, Julie Mangorillo, Roddy Soikian Andrews, I'm the consulting engineer for the planning board. So, uh, we got the revised supplemental. Uh, many of the previous comments have been addressed, so I was very pleased to see that. There are still some remaining. Um, I have not seen a, a full copy of the deed. I saw the email, uh, Mark, you had sent out in August, but I haven't seen a full copy. And I still haven't received, uh, a, um, complete copy of the combined application form, all in, in your name, you know, Mark and Brianna Marinelli, the ones that we.
I, I'm sorry, I sent the, the full deed over, um, with the bill of sale, um, today. Um, I thought I had sent the full deed over, I definitely sent the last page of it. I didn't know that there was, um, one more page to it. I didn't mean to cut you off. I just sent that over, I just emailed that to Vera, Vera today with the bill of sale, just to show you guys that I had it.
Yeah, I'll send it out tomorrow when I get in.
The affidavit, um, the last time we met, um, you guys just asked for the, um, the, um, business disclosure agreement, I think it was, but I didn't know about the, you guys didn't mention the, um, yeah, you guys said the, the business disclosure, which I did, but I didn't, you guys never mentioned the owner's affidavit, so I didn't know to submit that. But now that I know, if I could get a copy of whatever that is, I'll fill it out as soon as possible.
Yeah, so, so the combined application form has all those affidavits attached?
I'll send it out tomorrow, too.
Yeah, when, when you go through the application form and put in, you know, your name and your information, you'll see them attached. So then this way, um, as the owners, you can designate, you know, Joe Fregosi to attend meetings, um, on your behalf, and, uh, and all that. So that, that, you know, it needs to be done, but it's, it, it's not going to hold up anything, just, you know, as long as you can get it done.
If you're gonna email, we'll get that.
Yeah, we'll send it over as soon as possible.
Yeah, I'll send, I'll send it out tomorrow to you, Mark.
Um, do you have, uh, any updated, the Putnam County Health Department permits for the septic in the well?
I dropped that off probably two and a half weeks ago, to yous.
The one, the one I couldn't read the date, and the other one looked like it had a date of 2010.
No, and that had all the soil controls and everything else on it. I'll go down and look, but I could probably, you know, I can go down, I know we have it, that's not a problem.
All right, yeah, if you can look, because the, all the ones that I have are out of date. If you have more recent ones, that would be very helpful.
Oh, yes, we had to re, re, Board of Health, we had to redo.
Yeah, somewhat recently. You had the Board of Health redo it in the last year or so?
Yeah, well, the whole, the, the land was contingent on the Board of Health approval, so, I mean, yeah, we got, we definitely have it, that's.
Okay, all right, yeah, if you can take another look at that, that would be great. Um, so you guys had, had updated survey in 2019, which is very nice, very nice. Uh, Mr. Frederickson, his drawing, the stormwater pollution prevention plan drawing, still has the 1984 topo on it, not the updated 2019 topo, even though the drawing says it's the 2019 topo. So, it, it sho, it shows the, the driveways in a different spot, it's, the grading's a little bit different. So, i- if he's, if Mr. Frederickson's really unwilling to update his drawing, which he really should, um, he at least needs to acknowledge that it's the old survey information he was showing, and add a note or something to say, for updated topo, go see the, you know, the Baxter survey from 2019.
Okay, uh, believe it or not, the topo, hold on a minute, I do have the plans in front of me. Yeah, we had asked him to put it on a new, on the new survey, which I thought that he did, I. Well, the topo, um, the old survey, which was 2010 or something like that, showed the house in a different area. With the new location of the house and everything, you have on the updated plan, where it's showing where everything, where the, you know, going, where the house is going and everything.
Right, but the, the applying contour and where that shared driveway is, on, uh, Frederickson's drawing, doesn't match the new survey in topo from 2019 that you had done.
Uh, I believe he put everything on the new plan, which I have right in front of me, which I dropped off to you like two and a half weeks ago.
Right, I have that plan, but if you compare the driveway on the Baxter survey to the driveway on Frederickson's drawing, they don't match. It's not a huge discrepancy, but it is an important one.
The driveway?
Yeah, the existing shared driveway. You can see we're on the, on the 2019 survey, the driveway is much closer to the property line.
We're just looking at the plans that he did up. Now, because we had, we had thought, I mean, obviously, we're a little frustrated with, he had moved and he's upstate, and we've been trying, you know, he's, I've obviously paid him, so he's been dragging his feet as to fixing the plans, so I'm, he had, we had told him last time that he needs to put on the new survey, and he told us that he did, and so we're, they looked brand new. They look, when we got him back, they looked brand new, so that's the ones that we.
Yeah, I'm.
Looks like same exact.
Yeah, they look exactly the same.
Yeah, the, the ones that we have in front of us are, he, he did put on the new topo, and those were the ones that we did drop off, so I, and, and the dates at the bottom, in the bottom right-hand corner.
What's different about them?
Yeah, looking at the topo.
Yeah, the driveway, the shared driveway.
Yeah, at the, the common driveway, you can see on the, on the 2019 topo, the common driveway is closer to the property line.
It's 50.
No, they have them both the same.
They said, I guess they both have them at 50.
Well, the house is 50 feet off the driveway, off the driveway, but you have topo 110, which is in the same area as, from the old one to the new one. And then you have topo 910, uh, which looks the same here, and then.
Can, could I just suggest something? Good evening, it's, I'm Bruce Barbe, the town's environmental consultant. Would you folks be able to take a look at the plans and see in the lower right corner, typically, there's a table that shows dates on it, and it has the most recent revision date, but Julie and I, uh, looked at is one, from Mr. Frederickson, is a, one plan sheet, sheet one of two dated August 19th, and sheet two of two dated August 24th. I just want to make sure we're looking at the same plans. Is that what you folks have in your hands?
Yes, we have the one reviewed from August 19, 2020.
Right.
From January 14, 2019.
Right, so there's a second plan sheet that, that Roy submitted that revised August 24th, 2020. Do you have that?
Yes, we have, August 19.
August 19.
Okay, yes, it was August 19th, and then he, he resubmitted on the 24th. Okay, thank you, just want to make sure we're looking the same page. Thanks, Julie.
All right, so we don't have.
But the topo on the driveway, they look the same from the revised, from the old one to the revised one.
Right, at the, the common drive, the existing common driveway, when you look at it on the 2019 survey, that existing common driveway that goes to the other lot hugs the property line.
Wait, is she, is she saying we don't have the updated one from Roy, from the 24th?
No, we do have it.
No, that's updated one.
We do have it.
The one from Roy on the 19th.
It doesn't look like anything's wrong from there. I'm looking at Northwest 8403, side five, and it's in the area.
Yeah, I don't know if you can look at this. This is the 2019 survey, the new survey, and you see how the, the shared driveway?
Yeah.
Close to the property line. Right.
Close to the property line coming up.
The driveway runs through our property line, doesn't it?
Yeah, he, he, he has an easement to run through our property.
Right, no, I understand that. On Roy's drawing, this shared driveway is offset from the property line.
Yes, it is.
It's not in the same spot as on the survey.
They look, well, from the old.
They look the same.
I don't know what she's, what we're missing. They look exactly the same to us.
You see how there's the gap between the edge of the driveway and the property line on Roy's?
Yeah.
We, we have that.
Right, there's no gap on the 2019 survey. Here, the driveway comes right up against the property line.
So where's the 2019 survey?
Seen it. Can you see the date, 2019?
Right.
Did you see the date?
Yeah, the, the survey.
Okay, and then this is the new updated one.
Well, you gotta show her the picture.
All right. Do you have the right updated plan? What date is your plan that you're looking at?
Roy's is August 19th.
Yep, and that's the one I have here, which is showing, not unless when copied it, it's not wrong, but this is, this is the revised one at 2020, August 19th, and that's this one here, which is showing property line and the common driveway coming through.
Right, which doesn't touch the property line. The common driveway's supposed to touch the property line. But I'm going to scan the drawing and circle it and email it to you.
It does not touch, it doesn't touch the property line. When we got the, the, the flags that are on the property are beyond, the property line's beyond the common driveway. Yeah.
The survey shows it's touching, just for part of it.
I don't.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna circle the parts and scan it and email it to you.
Okay.
But what I'm trying to say is, based on that, it's not the same underlying drawing, but if Roy adds a note that says that he's still using the old topo, but refers the, you know, the reader, the updated survey, then I think we're going to call it good enough.
Okay, let me just write that down to Roy.
Yeah, let's write that down.
Sorry, guys, we're just trying. One of us knows, one of us knows what we're doing here, and two of us have no idea, so we have to write this stuff down.
So Roy needs to.
All right, I'll, yeah, I'll send you, I'll send you an.
He'll just have me email with it.
Yeah, that'd be great. Sorry about that.
It's all right, it's, I know, it's, it's hard when it comes to this stuff, but, you know, you guys spent good money on having your updated survey.
As a matter of fact, I think the one you have wasn't any good, because he redid them, there was two sets that I dropped off, and I got confused with them, and one set wasn't right and the other set was. But they both look the same, because I have to revise one of these.
Yeah.
As long as Roy writes that note, and we get Roy to actually.
You talk to Bruce today? Uh, did you, Bruce, did you talk to Roy today?
No, no, if you recall, I was going to speak with Julie, which I did earlier today, about the possibility of having a conference call with Roy to try to address these odds and ends that seem to be languishing, so, um, we're both happy to do that. Um, I think I could speak for Julie, because we spoke about that, so you would need to contact Roy and authorize him to speak with us, and maybe the most opportune time would be at the consultants meeting, which is, what, Vera, the 22nd?
Yeah.
And you can give Vera a call, and we can set that up, um, so that we can kind of move this toward the finish line.
Okay, great.
Okay, I'll be in tomorrow, if you want to call me tomorrow, I'll give you the time.
All right, um, also, the, the notice of intent, Roy needs to update it in Marinelli's name, since you guys own the property. And then for the drywells, typically, we require soil testing before the project's approved to show that you're not going to run into rock, or the water table, or other things that would require the drywall to be moved. So these drywells are to help offset, you know, the environmental impact of developing the lot, but per DEC, per the state regulations, they aren't required, because you're not disturbing more than an acre. So because they aren't required, even though they are a good benefit, um, I'm going to allow the, um, soil testing to be done during construction, which is what Roy asked for. So I've asked for Roy to add a note saying that if the drywells need to be relocated, because where they show them is not an appropriate location, they need to get the town approval before they install the drywells.
All righty.
All right, but typically, that soil testing, you know, would be done at the same time septic testing would be done, or before you would get, you know, any town permits.
Okay, when I give you the Board of Health, they have the soil test thing on it. Would that be good enough?
It, it could be, depending on the location of where the deep tests and perks were done for the septic.
Okay, well, it were, it were probably about maybe, maybe 60 to 80 feet away, probably about 80 feet away.
Yeah, I mean, that would certainly be very helpful.
Okay.
Anything else, Julie?
Yeah, there's, there's a couple other issues with the, with the drawing, that Roy, it's just, notes some things are contradicting each other, and then, uh, yeah, that's it.
Bruce, do you have something to add?
Uh, just, just a little bit, Phil, um, I had emailed, uh, Mark earlier today. I have sent out memos on January 6, 2019, February 13, 2019, and June 11, 2020, um, as the board is aware, and I have not yet received any direct response, uh, from, uh, the engineer, Mr. Frederickson. But what I did do is taking the materials that, um, the Marinellis and Mr. Fregosi had submitted to date, I kind of went through my memos and tried to parse out what maybe had been resolved in the process, um, and really, I just have a few remaining items. One has to do with the wetlands on the site. Um, there's some conflicting information, uh, there's a letter from DEC dated, uh, April 6, 2018, which is a survey letter, which indicates that there are no state wetlands, uh, on the property. However, when you go on the, on the DEC website and review the documents there, it appears there is a state wetland, um, and certainly a check zone, which is a tangential area, 500 feet away from a wetland boundary, it's mapped by DEC. Um, and so I, I've been asking for, uh, Mr. Frederickson to contact DEC just for clarification. Typically, what we see, as the board knows, is a, what's called wetland validation block, which is a signature block that wetlands have been delineated and found to be accurate by DEC, and signed off by the engineer or the surveyor. So that's really, uh, pending, be, and, and the reason that's, that's important is that the limits of disturbance with respect to the proposed septic system is very, very close to the wetland buffer. Um, it's not that we have a lot of latitude in terms of space on that. Um, the applicant has requested a waiver for the tree surveys. Um, I inspected the site a while back, and basically, this is just some sparse second growth on the parcel, looks like it had been managed at some time in the past, and, um, I, I can certainly recommend to the board, if you feel it's appropriate, that you may want to, uh, grant that waiver for the tree survey. Julie indicated that we still, uh, need some well and septic information. It was just, Mr. Fregosi was just smeared on the copies we looked at, so, um, it wasn't really possible to see if they're occurring or not. Sounds like you have current, uh, well and septic approvals, that's great. Um, if you can just bring those in, that would be wonderful, and, and, um, other than that, uh, that's, that's really where we're at. So honestly, it has to do a lot with the wetlands and just putting that, uh, to bed, um, which could be done, um, relatively easily with DEC. That's where we are.
Thank you, Bruce. Liz, do you have anything to add?
Um, I have no comments on this application.
Uh, since this is a public hearing, is there anyone who would like to speak on this?
Hang on, guys, I just let somebody in. Uh, can you please ask that question again for the public hearing questions?
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to speak about this issue?
I just want to let you guys know, it's, uh, Giancarlo Gattucci, Planning Board member. I am alone, I can hear and see you guys, but you guys can't see me.
Maybe that's better. Just joking. Hi, Giancarlo.
Hi, Giancarlo.
Hello.
Members, do you have any questions about this? Liz, do we have any actions we have to take?
Um, I haven't been involved in the review, I'm just listening in. Um, I think it depends on Julie and Bruce, what they still need for this application.
So, so we still need, uh, some information. Um, I would suggest you adjourn, could join us here until next month. Hopefully, we will get a, a, a conversation with Mr. Frederickson. He can bring in all the materials that are still outstanding. Uh, we can revisit this, um, uh, in the meeting in October, if, if that's what the board wishes.
Gentlemen, if you agree, can I get someone to, um, make a motion to move the public hearing to October?
Can we adjourn that?
Sure.
Do we have to adjourn first?
Yeah.
Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
I'll make that motion, Phil.
And a second?
I'll second that.
Giancarlo, how do you vote?
Aye.
Simon.
Aye.
Stephen.
Aye.
Charlie.
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Can I get a motion to adjourn the public hearing till next month?
We just did that, Phil.
Oh, all right.
No, we.
I'm gonna schedule it for the, I'm gonna calendar it for next month.
I'm sorry, Bruce.
You just want to calendar it now for next month.
Yeah, it's been adjourned.
Oh, we did that already.
I just adjourned it.
Okay.
Let's go to Vitiello. Is there someone here, Mr. Vitiello, would you like to?
Thank you, everybody. Thanks.
Thank you, you're getting there.
Hey, Mark, Mark, please give Vera a call to, once you speak with Roy, and set up that appointment to talk.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Give you time, I really appreciate you guys.
All right, thank you.
Bye, Mark.
Next month.
Bye, bye, guys.
Thank you, Bruce. Bye.
I'm sorry, I think I'm going a little too fast here. Uh, yes, we're up to Vitiello now.
Good evening, Chairman Talmage, members of the board, I am Eric Schlobum of Inside Engineering Surveying and Landscape Architecture, tonight, uh, representing the Vitiello residence. I believe I have shared my screen, is everyone sharing, seeing, uh, my screen?
Yep.
All right, so.
Yes, sir.
The property is located at 475 Punning Street, uh, a 32-acre parcel, Punning Street, uh, is here west of the parcel, I'm now circling, uh, the, the 32-acre parcel. The Vitiello's also own, uh, the property, uh, behind them to the east, uh, and also adjacent to them, uh, to the south, uh, totally over 100 acres amongst the three properties. The, currently, um, the, uh, the driveway comes off Punning Street, and there is an existing driveway, an existing residence, uh, pool, uh, tennis courts, um, as well as, uh, another driveway, uh, down to a, a shed, a garage structure down in this area, where I am circling with my, my mouse here. Uh, the proposed, uh, project is in addition to the, uh, existing residence, uh, addition to the proposed residence here, uh, also a detached garage with a second-story improvements, uh, for the, for the driveway, uh, to, to accommodate the new driveway, uh, as well. uh, as well as, uh, septic, uh, improvements for the additional bedrooms for the house. Uh, there will be two bedrooms, uh, added to the, uh, to the existing residence, and there is, uh, three bedrooms, uh, on the second story of the proposed garage. So, here shows a little bit more of the, uh, septic. The, uh, the existing septic for the house, uh, is going to be utilized now for a three-bedroom apartment, uh, and, uh, a new septic for now six-bedroom house, uh, is proposed. The, uh, the project had, uh, since the last official planning board meeting, we had moved the proposed garage, uh, ten feet to the north, uh, to pull it, uh, further out of steep slopes, uh, to address some concerns, uh, of, of, uh, thousands, uh, and also to save, uh, another street, uh, with that shift. Um, this, earlier this week, had, uh, a site walk with, uh, Julie and Bruce. Uh, Bruce confirmed that there are no wetland, uh, and no wetland permit required, uh, for the project. Um, there was, uh, observed some, uh, some tree clearing, uh, over, sorry, not tree clearing, but, um, there was some down trees, uh, in this area that had been brought down, uh, in the recent storm that, uh, had recently been removed, uh, and some topsoil had been placed. Uh, it was a small area, um, to be able to, uh, place some topsoil, just to be able to, to stabilize the area and clean up some, some storm damage. Uh, even with, uh, that disturbance, uh, and also a, a small, uh, trail, uh, in between the two existing, uh, the existing driveways, there's existing dirt road, uh, also there, but with all, even if that additional, um, disturbance is included in the project, it would remain under, uh, an acre. Uh, we'd also received today, and I forwarded on, uh, that the health department has no objection to the septic. They did ask for, uh, just some additional labels on floor plans. So, I guess at this time, I would ask if, uh, actually, the, the project needs a steep slopes and erosion control, uh, permit. That's what we are seeking. Are there any questions?
Thank you, sir. Uh, we need to reopen the public hearing. Can I get a motion to open the public hearing?
Make the motion, Phil.
And a second?
Oh, second.
Uh, Dennis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Steven?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Simon?
Aye.
Giancarlo?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Uh, is there, uh, no, anyone at this Zoom meeting who would like to speak about this project?
Yes, hello? Can you hear me?
Please, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Robert Vigdor, V-I-G-D-O-R. I'm the owner of the property at four sixty-six Pudding Street, which is, uh, directly opposite on Pudding Street and Gordon Road from, uh, Vitiello property. And I, and I just had, uh, three concerns. I, I don't know if this is the proper venue, but I would like to voice them now and to see if they would be addressed as part of the process going forward. Um, the first one is, uh, I'm aware now that there's a proposed increase in septic fields, uh, which is not, not far from my well, uh, which is, again, not far, uh, across Pudding Street. And my second concern is, uh, is tree preservation, um, for privacy. Uh, right now, both, both properties are heavily wooded, and, uh, I would hope that, uh, in the current situation of essentially non-visible neighbors could be maintained. And the third question has to do with the character of the, of the driveways. I have a driveway which is right opposite the property, and we've maintained that, uh, without asphalt. And I also have the, uh, shared right-of-way to the driveway at, uh, four ninety Pudding Street. And also, I've asked that neighbor to, uh, not asphalt pave that driveway in order to maintain, uh, kind of a rustic rural character to that section of Pudding Street, uh, with large wooded properties. Uh, those, that's really, uh, my concerns as a neighbor, uh, to be addressed i- if possible, uh, as the process moves forward. I thank you for your attention.
Thank you, sir. We will try to address those.
So if I understand, you are, uh, across Pudding Street from the Vitiello property?
That's correct.
So, uh, health department, for, for the well, uh, health department requires a, a minimum of a hundred feet from the well, uh, to a septic field. Um, we are, uh, over, uh, over two hundred and fifty feet from, from the property with the septic area, so we, uh, certainly exceed, uh, the health department requirements for separation, uh, for a septic, uh, to a well. Uh, the trees, uh, again, uh, the septic area is the closest, um, what would be basically a similar disturbance, um, or tree removal. Uh, as, as for the garage, uh, garage is approximately two hundred and sixty feet, uh, from the front property line, uh, and similar, uh, for the septic area that, uh, there would still be a, a substantial amount of trees, uh, between Pudding Street and Gordon and, uh, the, the new garage.
I, I would just add that there's no intention to remove any of those trees that are along Pudding Street, or, you know, up until that septic area is encroached, so, um, whatever visual, um, woodland that you see now will probably remain similar in your vista.
Okay, uh, I, I guess the, I know that there's a health department minimum and a usual and customary historical, uh, usage. I, I, I recognize that. Is, is this a common thing to have a, a septic field, uh, again, two hundred and fifty feet from a well without concern?
Yeah, it's, it's, the health department would allow it within one hundred feet, um, under, mm, under normal circumstances.
And I would imagine, once you take into account Pudding Street itself and then your property and position of your well, you might be something like four hundred feet perhaps, or even more to this.
Okay, alright. Again, I was just looking for reassurance that historically.
Of course.
I'm not, I'm not familiar. I'm not an engineer, and, uh, I'm just looking for reassurance that, uh, that this project won't in any way dispoil my well.
Yes, that, certainly, that's a paramount concern. Um, um, as to the, um, the driveway and maintaining rustic character versus asphalting, um, Mr. Vitiello is also on this Zoom, and he may want to address it because of maintenance issues he's had over time. That's sort of inspired him to feel that it might be, um, appropriate to do some asphalt, um, from the maintenance standpoint and runoff and control of all of that, but, um, you know, um, Frank Vitiello, um, is here. If, do you want to say something about that, Frank?
Yes, absolutely. Uh, pleasure to meet you neighbors. Um, look forward to meeting you, but certainly hope to maintain our trees so that we never see one another across our property lines. We're not likely to make our house anywhere visible to yours, or, or vice versa. And I do think we've got that septic field very far from your house, and I should point out, there already is a septic field there. We're, we're adding to it. Um, as far as the driveway goes, we have considered, uh, asphalting it because we have a gravel now, as you know. Um, and every winter, when they plow, um, we, we, we end up with the, all, all the pebbles off of the driveway onto the sides of the driveway, and then that fills the grass, and it's a whole, and it's a whole production. Um, I'm sure we could do that in a way that, um, you know, wasn't terribly destructive to the char, to the rusty character of that corner of Pudding and, and, um, Gordon, um, which in fact, you know, w- we're holding on to those, those hundred acres because we want to keep that character. So, you know, we're, we're, we're carrying the cost of the other parcel that's, that's on the corner of, uh, Gordon, and the parcel, our other parcel goes all the way down that nice undeveloped corner on Richardsville and Pudding that you can't see from here, but I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure you've seen that, that old stone structure, uh, in there. Yeah, that corner there. So, you know, we're, we're really interested in keeping it, uh, rustic, um, but we're also looking to a little bit, uh, simplify the maintenance and the plowing and the winter sit- situation.
I, I appreciate you saying that, and yes, I understand the properties that go all the way around really do help to maintain the character of the neighborhood. Uh, I, I do recognize the maintenance issue. I've been there for thirty years, and, uh, and we do have to do a little restoration work every spring in order to maintain, in order to maintain that, and so far, we've been doing that. I would just hope that could be taken into consideration.
Um, maybe there's an oppor- opportunity, um, Frank, um, like maybe the first twenty feet don't get asphalt or something like that?
We were thinking the same thing. We would probably like that look ourselves, that, you know, w- w- we, we come in past our stone, our stone wall there, and then even a little further before the, um, bu- bu- before the asphalt started. Um, I'm sure we can figure out some kind of better gravel that doesn't all end up in the grass every spring.
Can I jump in for, um, hi, I'm Julie Magarillo, I'm the consulting mayor for the planning board. So, Pudding Street is paved along here?
Yes.
Yes. So, in the, in the town code for driveways, if your driveway abuts a paved road, the first thirty feet must be paved.
Well, here's your ankle.
So presumably, if you have an existing driveway, you know, that's existing gravel, nobody's going to come and say, you know, hey, put asphalt down. But I just wanted to throw that in there.
No one's for compromise.
It, it, it was going so well.
Risky codes.
Can we get a, a maybe a exemption from that code?
You can ask the planning board for a waiver.
Okay. That's an interesting one.
And maybe we can cross that bridge when we get there, because I, I think, you know, we're, we're a ways off in figuring out what we're doing with the driveway. We're trying to get, uh, the structures built and just get that approval rolling.
Okay.
You're, you're up the hill, right? I think we've met once. Y- y- you, you, you have the beautiful piano music that comes down the hill?
I'm sorry?
You play the beautiful piano music that comes down the hill to us?
Yeah, that was it. You came up to visit.
Yep, yep. So, we'll, we'll come visit again before we, before we finalize anything, what we're gonna do at the front of that driveway.
That'll be great. Okay.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in attendance who would like to speak on this project? Julie, do you have any comments?
I do. Uh, so, we went for our site visit and noted that there's those, uh, other areas of disturbance. And so now, it looks like their total area of disturbance is going to be point nine nine acres. So if they go over point oh one acres, they now have an acre of disturbance, which pushes them into a whole nother category of the DEC construction permit, and they'll have to do long-term, uh, stormwater management, which nobody wants to do ever. So they're going to need to add a note to the drawing that says if there's any increase in the area of disturbance, that they're going to have to go to the next level of permitting.
I, I'd like to point out one thing related to that, um, because I, I, I know from when you go and look there, this is being viewed kind of as one point nine nine acre project, but that other area of disturbance were in the process of, of seeding and grassing and, and tree planting. So I think at the rate we're going, but, you know, by the time we were to break ground on this in spring, that, that other disturbance is all replanted and no longer disturbance.
Yes, that would absolutely be ideal, is if, you know, that's all stabilized and grassed out before you start on the next, you know, the, the next projects. That is.
And had, had we seen, had, had we seen this coming, I would have been, um, much more, uh, enthusiastic with my, um, landscaper, because he's been work, he's been working on this at a leisurely pace all summer. Uh, and I didn't realize it was gonna bump into this problem.
These things happen, but just to prevent any other future, uh, uh, problems or, you know, more work or expense for yourself, I would definitely recommend getting all of that, you know, seeded and stabilized before you start, um, you know, the garage.
Okay, so, so, w- w- we'll certainly make sure that that, that that is seeded and, and we'll sod it if we have to, so that is fully stabilized before we break ground on, on that.
Terrific news.
Great.
Um, I had had a note, uh, in my previous memo, asking for some of the, the basic language from the, uh, the DEC permit, particularly the required documentation that kept on site, and, uh, how to get, um, how you terminate coverage in an MS four community. So in the response letter, there had been some pushback against it, and in my response to the response letter, apparently was, uh, either misunderstood or it wasn't clear. But it's very important for that, those references to be on the drawing, because that, the best bet getting the contractor to make sure that they contact the town to schedule the final inspection as part of the MS community, and to make sure they have the required documentation on site, copy of the permit, the notice of intent, the letter of acknowledgement, all of those good things.
Right, Julie, I know we, we typically, um, you know, before construction starts, we put together the construction logbook, uh, and give that to, uh, the contractor to have on site, so all that documentation is there, but that's something that we typically do. I, I don't know if that's something that other engineers do, but, uh, you know, that, that is something we do to make sure that that stuff is, is on site.
Yes, and, and that's good, but it still should be on the drawings, because most contractors I've come across, if it's not on the drawings, it's not their problem. If you can just add, I mean, you can just.
We, we can add some.
And then, uh, I think that was, you addressed all my other comments about, um, the, uh, the site visit, you know, it'll show where all the drawings are and show where the, the trees will be removed in order to put in the new septic.
Yes.
And, okay. So then, the only other item that's left for me is the erosion control bond, which was also received today, but I didn't look at most of the other items that were emailed this afternoon, but I did look at the erosion control bond, and that, I am, I'm happy with that. So I don't know if the planning board wants to take that up now, or, uh, Bruce should probably go over his comments first.
Okay. Bruce? Um, yeah, uh, as Eric said, we went out and conducted a site inspection. Julie, Eric, Diana from Carol's office and myself, that was on September eighth. Um, part of the inspection was to determine if there were any jurisdictional town of Kent wetland or wetland buffer areas associated with the limits of disturbance, of which there are not. As Eric indicated, therefore, a town of Kent wetland permit is not required. Um, the applicant provided a short form, Part One EAF. This action is a Type II action under C curve. Um, as has been discussed with the trees, um, basically what we're asking the applicant to do is to identify the area, uh, where the septic is proposed.
You just, they don't think such smart.
Um, and indicate the limits of disturbance there, that at that edge of disturbance, there shall no, not be any additional tree cutting. Um, and, um, basically, that will satisfy just the trees being cut as required within the proposed septic system application and not outside of that. Um, the other trees are marked to be cut on the plan, um, associated with the proposed garage. Eric and I, we're, we're, we're going back and forth on, on plan note number four on, uh, sheet OP one, and Eric, I think maybe what we can do is make it a positive thing indicating that, um, tree cutting shall only occur between November first and March thirty-first of the. tree cutting shall only occur between November 1st and March 31st of the following year. Does that suit you? Okay?
Yep. And I, I think there was a little, yep, that, that works.
I think that, I think we might boilerplate that one down the road. Make it nice and easy. I was, uh, asking about any blasting or rock chipping. The applicant has indicated there'll be some rock chipping in, uh, Eric and Carol's office indicated it'll be about 10 days in duration with no blasting that's proposed. The septic system approval from the health department is pending and that's where we are. And, and one thing that I think is significant and the boards, uh, discussed this at length, as was also discussed at the zoning board of appeals. Carol, are you still here?
I am, I'm here.
Carol, could you just be basically summarize the, the excellent, uh, letter you put together, which basically detailed the proposed use of the, the garage, et cetera. Uh, you don't have to read it or anything, but just summarize for the board.
Sure. Um, in short summary, um, this is for the family, their use, their guests, they come up on weekends. They have a lot of extended family during COVID. They've obviously spent a lot more time up here. It's a very family oriented, um, household. They eat their meals all together. The, um, three bedroom apartment will not have a kitchen. It might have an under counter fridge and a sink and some, you know, convenience of a microwave, but it, there's no intent for it ever to be used as a rental apartment, uh, an Airbnb or other tenant type of arrangement. Um, the zoning board approved it that way as well. Um, the garage, um, as you saw on the property, the, um, it's really more of a shed, is a maintenance garage all the way down a secondary road. So having a garage in proximity and the client has some additional cars. It was important to have that in close proximity to a house. And so it naturally lent itself to having the bedroom above. Uh, we also are working with the topography very much, um, in the spirit of Frank Lloyd Wright being of the hill. And, um, therefore the way the project is designed, the second floor actually has access to the top of the hill with a little terrace that you can walk out. And so the second floor, really has windows on, you know, on, you know, front and back as a result. So you've got cross ventilation and the ability to walk right out and the, pretty much the majority of the garage is tucked into the hill.
I'm sorry, Carol, could you just identify yourself for the record?
Sure, absolutely. Carol Perth, Carol Perth Architecture.
Thank you.
And just to, uh, further discuss the, uh, Z V A, uh, we did add a note to the plan on noting that the Z V A, uh, variance, uh, had the condition of it not being used as an Airbnb and that the renewal every five years. We have added that to these other plans.
Bruce, do you have more to add?
No, that's, that's all I have on my list. So thank you.
Liz, do you have anything?
I just want to add something. I don't, um, I don't review, um, single family residential applications. But I did hear something about rock removal. And I do have kind of a standard rock removal note, so I'll talk to Bruce later and see if that's necessary on this or not. It's pretty simple. No.
Great, Liz. Sounds good.
Thank you, Liz. Members, do you have any questions? Uh, applicants, do you have any other questions for us?
Can we build our house?
I, I believe, uh, the.
Eventually.
Eventually. When you go home, you will find it completely finished.
I love that kind of virtual reality. Just wish it was real.
So I guess the, the next steps, uh, are I know, uh, it's my understanding we need to be referred to, uh, the town board uh, for the erosion control bond. Uh, and then also, uh, if, uh, the board is, uh, would be able to take any action in moving toward conditional approval or anything in, in that nature.
Yes, we have a few things to do first. Liz, what do we do?
I think I'm going to send you back to Bruce and Julie on, on process. I don't know if you're continuing the hearing.
Phil, I think that, yeah, Phil, I think, um, if the neighbor is still available, just to confirm that his questions have been satisfactorily answered.
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, great. Then if that's, that's the case, the board may wish to close the public hearing. And at this time, wish to have the reining of the comments addressed on administrative track.
And then we have to do the bond.
And then after that would be the bond.
Can I get a motion to close the pu- public hearing?
Move the motion.
And a second please.
I'll second.
Charlie, how do you vote?
Aye.
Dennis.
Aye.
Simon.
Aye.
Jean Carlo.
Aye.
Stephen.
Aye.
And I vote aye. And can I get a motion to move this to administrative track?
I'll make the motion.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Stephen, how do you vote? Jean Carlo.
Aye.
Simon.
Aye.
Charlie.
Aye.
Dennis.
Aye.
And I vote aye also. And Julie, tell us about bonds.
I do too. So I don't, um, it was emailed this afternoon, uh, with a whole bunch of other information. I don't know if any of you have seen it. I can, I can hold on to my camera or I don't know if Eric has a copy of it that he can open up.
Yes. And I know it had, uh, initially, uh, been submitted back in August. Ask that, uh, the erosion control blanket, uh, be added. Uh, so that is, uh, this line item right here. And then also the flap, sorry, rip rap outlets and splash pads, uh, were added. Uh, and Julie and I had talked about that, that price. So yes, this is the, the current version of the bond.
Yes. And, and so this, the $6,124 is what I'll recommend to the planning board to accept and refer to the town board for acceptance.
Thank you, Julie. Can I get a motion to accept the, um, an erosion control bond for $6,124 and then send it to the town board?
I'll make that motion.
And a second please.
I'll second.
Go, Charlie.
Thank you. Dennis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Charlie.
Aye.
Simon.
Aye.
Jean Carlo.
Aye.
Stephen. And I vote aye. Anything else?
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Bye bye.
There anyone here for the Kent development, the commercial lot and timber harvest?
Yes, uh, Jamie Legudis from Inside Engineering and Richard Espino as well, I believe he's on. I don't, there's my video. Okay.
Thank you. Give us a quick, uh, rundown of your project.
Just going to try and share my screen. So as the, uh, the board is aware, um, we received several comments, uh, regarding the project at the last meeting. We did, um, basically an overhaul and shifted the building and parking. Um, basically outside of the additional 15 foot buffer that is, uh, adjacent to the residential zones that the I O C parcel is, um, is being developed on. Showed here is the, um, overall plan that shows the I O C parcel and the timber harvest parcel. Um, to give you a general idea of the magnitude of the two projects, um, as a whole, with the lot line adjustment between the two of them. Uh, we did provide the wetland boundary, um, validation block, both executed as requested as well. So as I mentioned, we did ship the building. We showed the 15 foot setback, um, along the residential portions of the property. We have the, um, the building outside of that setback, the parking outside of the wetland boundaries themselves. We have the wetland boundary demarcated with, um, three foot boulders positioned 25 foot on center. We did, uh, shift and minimize the retaining walls on site to be a three foot maximum, um, for both of them. Uh, we do have the one labeled as typical, so that applies to this one as well. We do show also vegetation, uh, evergreen vegetation along the, um, the buffer, within the buffer, um, adjacent to the residential zone, uh, to screen the building from the residential property adjacent. Um, I believe there, there was a comment about, um, existing trees that were in, uh, this portion of the parcel that is to be conveyed from the larger parcel onto the I O C parcel. Um, when we did the tree survey itself, we had not gotten these amount of trees. Um, but we can include, uh, a note to the effect and then show the full parcel. Basically the, the note would, would read something along the lines of, um, vegetation within the buffers to, um, remain to the greatest extent possible, um, to reserve the, uh, screening capabilities of that vegetation.
Thank you.
Yep. Moving on to the grading utilities plan, uh, we were able to move the infiltrators underneath the parking. Um, this, that helped us with, uh, shipping the parking over and not worrying about steep slopes as much. Um, we're, we did, uh, what was my train thought there? Um, we, we do have to adjust the, the detail to show the, the correct profile on top of the infiltrators. Um, just showing the pavement instead of the, uh, just earth on top as previously shown. We will do that in the next submission. Also included, um, haybells on the backside of sil fence leading toward the, um, the wetland buffers themselves. Um, and since the water quality swell is, is so close to that, uh, wetland, the haybells are not intended to filter any, any sediment or whatnot. It's just more to keep the sil fence intact and upright so that they don't blow out or, uh, allow sediment to, to break free and go into the wetlands and, and hinder them. Um, we did provide a lighting plan as well for the building. Uh, as you can see, it basically around the entire parcel is zeros. Um, within, except for, you know, directly next to the building itself, as there's just building mounted lights. They're, they're fairly typical in the foot candles and would only be on, um, if from dusk until closing of business, um, and then on motion sensors for security. And then we have our details. We did provide the driveway profile itself, um, for review. And, uh, did give a general detail on the sign, just to have a, a general idea, um, given that we don't have an actual user for the, the building itself, um, this is just a generic, uh, location for the sign showing that it's, um, 10 feet off the property line and, um, a general, general look. So we were in receipt of the comments, the recent comments from the consultants. Thank you for those. Uh, we, uh, are confident that we can address the majority of them in the next, uh, submission. And we look forward to any questions that you have.
Great. Thanks, Jamie. Bruce, do you want to start?
Sure.
So we had a, uh, discussion back at the end of August and then of course at the workshop last week. There's been quite a few substantive changes to prove this application. Um, I do have some remaining comments. Basically, the setback requirements under the zoning with respect to the 15 foot additional requirement, as Jamie has indicated, has now been met by shifting the building and installing the infiltration structures underneath the parking. There is, um, landscaping and screening proposed. If you wanted to, Jamie, point that out with the arrow, uh, along the common boundary of the I O C property and the neighbor's residential property. Uh, the code however indicates, uh, that that remaining 15 feet, um, which also is adjoining residential properties, which, uh, is highlighted by a light line um, on this plan, also needs to be maintained in terms of vegetation, either existing vegetation, which will provide adequate visual and noise attenuation, or augmented with certain shrubs and trees, which was what Jamie is on already on that one section of it there. Liz and Julie and I were speaking about it. We thought it might be most efficient for us to go out and have a look at that area in question and the limits of disturbance. Because if it's satisfactory in terms of the vegetative content and the screening, and basically just maintaining that area as is would be appropriate. We, however, without not looking, we can't make a recommendation to the planning board if additional plants, trees, shrubs are required. So that's the first thing that we'd like to have a look at that area in question. Um, then the second is to, Jamie, add some plan, plan notes so that area would remain, um, basically in a natural state in perpetuity. And that would be in compliance with site plan requirements under zoning. So, um, that piece of it, the 15 foot piece, the septic system, also Jamie, I know we talked a little bit about, can that be shifted a bit to the south and east, a little bit away from the steeper slopes and be able to maintain that 15 foot strip, um, that is now going to be probably cleared to accommodate the grading for the septic. So that's that area in general. The applicant in the lower portion of the property adjoining North Horse Pound, um, is going to cut some trees to accommodate the driveway installation. Um, they have requested a waiver of section 7626A8, which requires a tree card to be maintained, um, on these properties. And this of course is necessary, um, to, uh, allow access to the property as well as to avoid to the greatest degree practicable the, the wetlands, which are in close proximity to the driveway. So my suggestion to the board is to, uh, consider that waiver as appropriate. With respect to the wetlands, there's approximately, according to the applicant, 18,920 square feet of wetland buffer disturbance. The applicant has admittedly done a lot of positive things to reduce the environmental impacts. But we still would like to discuss with them some type of wetland buffer mitigation to ensure that the buffer function, um, is, is, is maintained. The wetland itself is right at the edge of the driveway. We also is coterminous with the proposed limit of disturbance. Uh, it's probable that during construction, some of that wetland might be disturbed and, and we acknowledge that. And, uh, that will be part of the permit. DEC permit is needed for this application that is pending pursuant to a secret determination by this board. The timber harvest, basically on the residential component, um, just needs, as we discussed a while back, to have an upgraded timber management plan. It is still the old plan, which, uh, envisioned the entire property, the I O C and the residential being logged. Um, as the board is aware, uh, Mr. Espino is no longer intending to, uh, log the I O C property, only remove trees within the indicated limits of disturbance. The septic system appears to be a little bit within a 15% slope. Um, just please have a look at that. Jamie, the soil's showing on the map.
Sorry to interrupt you on that one. I, I just wanted to interject because engineers told me an interesting fact that I was not aware of.
You got.
For commercial properties, you can go up to 20%. So we are okay for them.
Okay. Yeah. We have that, that part of the code within the town of Kent though, that if we could avoid the steep slopes, that would be great. And 15% is defined in steep slopes. So just have a look at it, Jamie, see if there's any feasibility for that.
Unfortunately, we can't move it. It has to be 50 feet away from the building. So there's.
Okay.
We're already accentuating circular sentences.
Yeah. But, but you know, Jamie, that's really important because if there's a practical hardship that can be demonstrated. Yeah, but, but you know, Jamie, that's really important because if there's a practical hardship that can be demonstrated by the applicant. Then the board could consider a more reasonable aspect of that 15 foot buffer not being able to be maintained as we discussed. So if there is real reason why the septic has to be where it has to be, um, just document that. That would be helpful.
Perfect. Thank you.
Let's see. Um, the cultural historical resources, the applicant had done um a cultural resource survey and basically we spoke about finding some documents indicating that the um, that the application had been accepted and was no longer considered something that the state had to review. And I know Jamie, we were gonna send you on a, on a hunting match to see if there's anything in the old files that might have happened when this application was before the board, um, or if there's anything new that's happened in that as well. And other than that, um, I'm suggesting, um, and Julie will speak this more than I. That uh water quali- the water quality swell down close to the wetland. Um, there is just concern of the slope and the grading and the driveway. That there might be some potential sediment discharge to that resource. So it suggested that maybe some water bars be installed in the driveway to break up the velocity. Um, of the water discharging down to the road and into the wetlands. Also sediment trap uh at the uh entrance of the water to the swell. And also perhaps at the very top of the property and interceptor swell, which would redirect the clean water running off the residential parcel around the area of construction and not have it mix in with all the soil. Um, and then just uh labored materials for the planting materials for bonding purposes. And um, that's really what I have for now. So just basically some odds and ends. As I said, the applicant has come quite a long way from an environmental perspective.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Julie?
Yes. Oh, um, I was also happy that the building was able to be shifted. I think that'll work out very nicely. Uh, I have some comments on, on notes for drawings and then um our notes for drawings, the OPRP. And uh, there was a uh comment that the, the timber harvest isn't subject to uh the SWIP, which is true. It's not subject to the DEC permit. But the access road, how it gets to a public road and where the logs are, you know, staged and loaded onto trucks. That is uh required to have a town of Kent erosion control permit. So I'm just asking that they clarify that in this way. Um, and then uh, a couple of other things mentioned about the tree survey in the area of the septic. So, you know, I think if they just note that there's trees there now and, you know, some trees to be removed, that would be sufficient. Uh, I'm still concerned about how they'll operate during construction to make sure that sediment doesn't get into the infiltration system and the water quality swell. So just how, you know, how will they be protected during construction? And I'm saying well uh, they'll need to provide a uh long-term stormwater management facility uh construction guarantee bond for the code. And to extend some of the boulders along the wetland buffer along the driveway. The water quality swell through manual, the, the DEC design manual. There's supposed to be a 10% water quality volume as pretreatment uh that can be done with check dams. This would provide a, a four bay that'll be close to the driveway. That should uh make it a little easier to muck out any sediment that gets in there, you know, road salt, sand from the winter. Uh, so I think we could take a look at that. And if the water quality swell area is going to be used as a sediment trap during construction. Uh, we'll need to provide additional notes regarding that. Um, and then as Jamie mentioned, just additional information, now that the infiltration system will be beneath pavement instead of beneath the grass area. And uh, as Bruce mentioned, to provide a burmer swell along the uphill side of the septic system building so that the, the clean quote unquote run on from the up residential property is diverted around the disturbed area during construction. It just has to be a temporary. Um, and then uh, we had talked about, as we don't know what the use of the building is going to be. Uh, at the end of my memo, I had provided some example notes for the planning board to consider regarding storage of loose materials. Uh, you know, if, if there's gonna be, you know, crush rock, stone, mulch soil. Um, that they would have to be stored in concrete block bins. Um, you know, they'd have to be contained and uh to uh have the stacked height of any material not to exceed 10 feet and not to be located within 35 feet of any property line. So that 35 feet is the setback plus the additional setback. And then some dust control. So that's something the, the planning board can take a look at. And then the most controversial statement uh comment I have is regarding the requested waiver from the driveway code to provide the driveway as built prior to uh issuance of building permit. The applicant has requested to provide it as part of uh prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy. So I had contacted Bill Walters and we had discussed it a little bit via email. But at this point, because the site is so constricted between the property line, the wetland buffer. You know, there's, there's a lot going on. They're gonna have to have the infiltration at the top hill. I still don't believe that there's a justification to delay the as-built all the way until uh certificate of occupancy. If there's things that need to be addressed or adjusted at the time of uh certificate of occupancy, you know, the, the building's done. You know, people are ready to start moving in and converting loads and all that kind of stuff. So you know, I, I really believe it, it should be tied earlier into the construction process.
I agree with that.
Those are my comments.
Thank you, Julie. Liz, do you have something for us?
Yes. Um, so I was very pleased to see the building moved and those um setbacks delineated on the plan, some landscaping. Some, there were some really good uh positive changes to address um a lot of our prior comments. Um, one of my comments had to do with providing some kind of an inset plan that shows the landing area related to the timber harvest. Um, access landing, grading, et cetera. Um, so if there's a way you can maybe do an inset on one of the sheets and refer to it and I believe showing it at the level of detail that you had it in the timber harvest materials originally would, would probably be acceptable. So that's one comment. Um, last time I mentioned a rock removal note and uh so Jamie, I, that's one of my comments. I gave you the wording for that. And then just touching on Bruce, um, had already talked extensively about um, doing some kind of um site visit and then um adding um adding some notes to the plan that are basically gonna say, show and delineate and and say existing wooded areas to be retained. And it would basically be anything outside the limited disturbance. Um, understanding the septic is where it is. And the concept was you're showing some landscaping. And it is required to provide some kind of buffering, but the idea here is to work with what we've got. But in order to take credit for the existing vegetation. You know, it needs to be delineated on the plan with notation that, you know, indicates it will be retained. No. You know what I mean? We don't want any equivocal uh notation in there. So um, then I know that you've asked for a few waivers. And so I've tried to reflect in my review memorandum um regarding sidewalks. Regarding pedestrian amenities. Um, and regarding the building and loading areas to be reversed. So basically in each of those comments, I'm acknowledging what's being waived, acknowledging that you've requested a waiver. And indicating the planning board can discuss and consider these waivers. So I'm recommending that the board could grant those. And what I'm suggesting is that we would address those when we get to the point of approval. Um, unless the board has any problem with any of those waivers. But basically what we're saying is um, that we don't really feel sidewalks or pedestrian amenities are necessary here. And given the constraints of the site, uh, the standard to have the building in front and loading in the back really wouldn't work here. So I'm acknowledging that and I'm recommending the board grant that waiver. Um, let's see. Uh, I did notice that you have basically everything you need for a sign except for the actual text. And the only thing that I, that I tried to note in my sign comments is you are entitled to have a two-sided sign with 20 square feet on each side. The way this sign is located on the plans with the setback is fine. But it looks as if it's a single face facing the road. And if you're on a road and you've got people traveling by, you might want to have a two-sided sign that's perpendicular. So that would be a suggested change so that they have, you know, the signage that they're entitled to. And I would say the more information you could put on that aspect of the plans, when you come back for a sign permit, you really have about everything you need. Um, let's see. I see if I missed anything. And then um then my recommendation at this point, because you've made some progress and you've, we've, we've got some detailed plans. Um, so I'm recommending um that it's possible if the planning board is inclined to declare their intent to act as lead agency in the seeker review of the proposed action and circulate to involved agencies. The planning board would also make 239 L and M referral to the Putnam County Department of Planning for review and comment. And also consider setting a public hearing um for the several applications for special use permit. Site plan, revised lot line, freshwater wetlands, steep slope and erosion control application. So that's my recommendation. And I guess I'd like to hear from the board how they're feeling about ready.
Is that all, Liz?
The idea is to do all at once.
Any questions? Nobody? You're gonna have to lead us through this, Liz.
Okay, and you know what? As with other meetings, I neglected to introduce myself. My name is Liz Axelson. I'm a planner with CPL and I'm the planning board's planning consultant. So I have prepared you a draft resolution. Um, the several, um, two, three, four, uh, it looks like there's about 10 clauses up front. Um, describe the project, the various permits that are being applied for what has been submitted. Um, noting that this would be an unlisted action under seeker, meaning it's not a type one action and it's not a type two action. Noting that it's within 500 feet of New York State Route 52. And um, that it is also within 500 feet of an adjacent municipality, which is the town of East Fishkill. And then the resolution that I've drafted for the planning board resolves to classify the project as an unlisted action under seeker. It also resolves that the planning board declares its intent to serve as lead agency in a coordinated review of the project and directs its secretary to circulate notice of intent and other materials to involve the interested agencies. The resolution also resolves uh to refer the application to the Putnam County Department of Planning, Development and Public Transportation. And lastly resolves to direct its secretary to send a notice of public hearing to the town clerk of the adjacent municipality, which is the town of East Fishkill. The one thing that I don't put in the resolution, because the board usually does this as a separate motion, is to set the hearing. So I guess I would suggest the board first make a motion to set the hearing for next month.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions about any of this?
Sure.
Who would like to make a motion to set the pulp book hearing on this application for next month?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second that.
Come on, wake up, guys. Dennis, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Simon?
Aye.
Giancarlo?
Aye.
Steven?
Aye.
And I vote aye too. Now can I get a motion to uh to accept this, the resolution that Liz just led for us?
Please adopt it.
To adopt it.
I'll make that motion, Phil.
And a second, please.
I'll second Giancarlo.
Gian- Carlo, how do you vote?
Aye.
Steven? Dennis?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Simon?
Aye.
And I vote aye too. Uh, anything else on this?
Unless anybody has questions.
Uh, I do not have any questions. Thank you very much.
All right, and let's get in touch. Um, Vera, Jamie and I maybe should get in touch on Monday to get the packets organized and so forth.
Yeah, that sounds good. I'm, the only thing, I'm not in Monday, so it should be Tuesday.
I'm sorry. Okay. That sounds better. Okay.
Okay.
All right, good.
Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good night.
Thanks, Jamie.
Thanks, Jamie.
I think we're below the line now?
No.
What is it?
Julie has to talk about gold fine RIN.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Yes, you're right. Uh, Mr. Rinner, are you here?
I am. Can you hear me?
Would you give us a brief overview of your project? Or you just want a bond reduction?
Yeah, I, I just need some money back, that's all, if possible.
All right. Who, who wants to speak about this?
I, I will speak about it. So the, the uh, the town has a bond of $17,401. Uh, I explained it in the workup that the, the code says the bonds will be held two years after the date of exceptions. The planning has been releasing bonds earlier than that, but we wanting all the vegetation to survive a winter. The majority of the lawn areas were stabilized in November, December, uh, 2019. So that's all survived the winter. Uh, there was some particular grassy biofilter basins that was only established. So based on that, a recommendation is for the town to continue to hold $5,000 bond. Which would cover the cost of the diversion swell and the biofilter basins, which are the most critical aspects of the, the project for erosion control. And these the remaining uh $12,401 because the, the majority of the site has been stabilized for more than one year. And I did not include this uh in the memo, but I also wanted to say that this is assuming that all outstanding invoices fees have been paid to the town, the planning board, building department and, and all those good things.
And you think 5,000 will be enough?
I do, yes.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions?
Yes, yeah, at the workshop.
Can I get a motion to return $12,401 of the bond to Mr. RIN? And hold $5,000.
I'll make the motion soon.
And a second, please?
I'll second that.
And Steven, how do you vote?
Aye.
Giancarlo?
Aye.
Simon?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
And I vote aye too.
Thank you. Uh, I just want to say, I think, uh, and I do appreciate it. Uh, after doing a little review, uh, the, uh, the grass, uh, grass, the estimate, I'm gonna have to talk to Jack Correll, the estimate he gave me to, to plant 7,500 square feet of grass seed, I think he had a price of $1.50 a square. And I think that was about probably 20 times what it actually cost, and, you know, when I saw somebody else's bond estimate, I saw they had it priced at, I think it was six or eight cents a square foot, and Jack had it priced at $1.50 a square foot. So, you know, about $12,000, but that was some very expensive grass, is basically what I'm saying. It's just, and that's my own fault for being a newbie, you know? You know, when I looked at it, I said, okay, whatever it is, a bond is a bond, you have to pay.
The, Michael, the six cents a square foot, Jack's estimate has $1.50 per square yard. So it wasn't as much as you think.
Okay. It's probably 18 times as much than I would imagine, so...
It's, it's not as far off.
Okay. I'll accept that.
Jack, special grass.
Yeah, it was, oh, it was, oh, yeah, it was, it was very expensive grass, but, okay. Listen, I do, I really do appreciate you, you know, considering reducing it for me, I really do.
All right. Then I'll go take a look next spring, you know, I'll coordinate with you to coordinate with the current homeowners to go take a look, and then if everything's A-OK, which it should be, then, you know, we'll recommend the release of the remaining $1,000.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it, everybody.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Bye-bye.
I think we're below the line now. Who's working tonight?
I suppose I'll work tonight. All right. DEP Bailey Brook Forest Management Project, that I believe is ready for chairman's signature. I need to write up the wetland permit, and then they are good to go. Sun Property, we haven't received a new submittal. Putnam Nursing, Liz, you want to say anything?
I'm basically gonna, hopefully, next week, get a write-off letter out if all the conditions are summed up, and I can get in touch with Jeff Battistoni.
Okay. Route 52?
Nothing new.
Rodriguez, that was the subdivision. We haven't seen anything new in two years. So I think I was gonna work on a letter with, with Phil regarding following up with them, and if they're going to continue, or if they're going to withdraw. Renee, we haven't gotten anything new. Car Game Property, we're still waiting on an official withdrawal. DeSanza's still working and swimming through the court. And Cabrera, I'm still waiting for an update from the architect.
I think Bill wanted to say something.
We had a court meeting tonight. They failed to show up at court. The court's been pushed off till October 2nd. We, the prosecutor's gonna be contacting their lawyer. They're requesting that the fees from the planning board be dropped and be reimbursed back to them. Judge kind of ruled to the prosecutor that they need to make contact with the planning board, so that they can go out and do their inspections, but I'll have more on October 2nd.
This is DeSanza, Bill?
DeSanza.
Yeah.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Yep.
Did we finish here? Vera, do we, you have anything for us?
No, I think you guys covered everything.
Do I have stuff I have to sign?
No, I don't have anything right now for you.
All right. Does anybody have any questions, comments? Can I get a motion to close the meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Dennis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Simon?
Aye.
Giancarlo?
Aye.
Steven?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Thank you, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody. Stay safe.
Bye-bye, all.
Well done, team.